North St. Paul.
Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone. This time a motion, or we'll do the roll call. Jenny?
Councilmember Thorson?
Here.
Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Mayor Fralong?
Here. Quorum is present. This time a motion to adopt the agenda.
Your honor.
By Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. We do have one presentation, and we've done this in the past. It's a mayoral proclamation, Constitution Week in North St. Paul. And I'll read the proclamation here. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2022, marks the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to its, to this magnificent document and its memorial anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which, which, which will commemorate it. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, on behalf of the City Council of the City of North St. Paul, I, Terry Fralong, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of North St. Paul, do here proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Be it further resolved, I ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Signed this day, 16th of August, 2022. That is the proclamation. And at this time, we have our consent agenda, and they are the general claims of $501,598.1 HRA claims of $232,291.62, EDA claims of $212.50, the lease extension between the City of North St. Paul and Kokora Volleyball, the Park and Recreation Park entry signs, the building permit report, July of 2022, and the resolution approving acceptance of donations received by, received on July 20, received July 2022. This time, any council member can poll an item at this time if they still want to. I would like to poll the Park and Recreation Park entry signs. If we can move that down to general business for item C.
And may I poll item D, please?
Which one?
Item D, the leases.
Lease exten, okay. And lease extension between the City of North St. Paul Kokora Volleyball. And then we'll move that to D down below, city business and action items. So at this time, motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? Now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. This time, the meeting is open to the public. I do have a couple people. And I'll just read what this open forum is, an opportunity for persons to address the City Council on items not on the agenda. A completed public comment forum should be presented to the deputy clerk prior to the meeting. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. While the City Council may ask clarifying questions of the speaker, no formal action by the City Council or discussion will be held on these items. So at this time, John Schmal. Welcome, John.
Mayor, Council. There was a time a previous city manager said with the new television system that there would be the opportunity for someone who spoke to use whatever they had on their phone as pictures to do this, that they could cast it to the system. And he said, "That is a, would be a wonderful thing when you got up to be able to explain." I guess we've never had that opportunity because that city manager is no longer here. And probably nobody else knows that your system supposedly would allow that. But, just off subject. Anyway, Lexus IS, Nexus IS, not Lexus Car, or Nexus, a joining together, or a confluence of the meaning of the words. Does anyone in the council know what I'm talking about, Lexus Nexus? I guess not. Lexus, okay, one council member. This is the way you are able to obtain information on crime in this city. It's, it's a provider. It's a contractor with this city. And since July 19th, we have not had any reports of crime. It is, there's nothing there. There's this Berlin Wall next to Maplewood with multiple crimes happening in it, and nothing in North St. Paul. Not entirely north, nothing, because every once in a while, a Maplewood police officer will enter into North St. Paul chasing a drunk driver or something. There was yesterday, a crime reported in North St. Paul by a Maplewood officer because it was, he stopped them in North St. Paul. So anyway, at this particular point in time, since July 19th, there hasn't been a report of a crime in North St. Paul. I called the police office here and said, "Hey, do you know?" "Yeah, we know." "Oh, what are we doing about it?" "Well, we've, we've done something." I don't know what it was that they did. And I said, "Well, there's also been a change with the program that's associated with this, and it's completely different as you look at it, especially on your phone, to get the information." And I said, "The information isn't there when you try to access it with your phone." And the person I'm talking to in the police office said, "Well, here's the email address and a, and a phone number that I could call and explain what I was having a problem with for someone who's in North St. Paul where there are no reports." So I said, "I'm not even thinking about doing that." So for anyone who's running for office in the next election, you can look at this Lexus Nexus and say, "There's no crime in North St. Paul," which I think is not entirely true. I, you know, I'd look into it. If it's important to pay a vendor, it would be important to have the vendor provide the service, I would say. Simple. I had an experience in, at a planning commission meeting where a group from the condos, I can't remember the name, that are next to Public Works, that go up Seventh. They were at the planning commission meeting and made a complaint about something dealing with shift skis that came up many years ago, that they were going to make a change and things had to be done. And they just poured out their hearts on what was bothering them. And I thought, "Are they in the wrong pew in the church?" And Planning Commission Committee listened to them, and then they left. But as they were leaving, I remember when this came up before the planning commission, and I went out the door and I said, "Is the guy with the white socks still around?" And one of the council members that I talked to remembers the guy with the white socks. And he was the guy who said, "I had put these, this pair of white socks on the sill of the window." And he said, "After a week, they were black." And he was complaining about the dirt that comes from shift skis. Anyway, I ran out the door, "Is he still around?" And the woman that was in charge of this says, "I don't think he's in the condos anymore." And her husband said, "No, he died." So I don't know if he ever felt that he got his questions answered or not. But have you heard anything about this group that got together and keep, you know, so evidently it wasn't passed on from the planning commission to the council? And I thought they were, they were wasting their time, and evidently they were wasting their time. Just letting you know, if you're not aware of it. And then the profit on the sale of the house on 19th. You approved the sale of the house on 19th on the July 26th meeting. And there was a statement made by the city manager as to the profit made on the house on 19th. And I didn't write it down. So I thought, "Well, it's in, it's in the agenda." No, it wasn't in the agenda. The only, the sale price of 4.6 million, or 460,000 dollars.
I wish it was 4.6 million.
Well, it's outrageous that it went at that price either, but.
Well, that's your opinion.
And so the profit wasn't at 460,000 dollars, the AMI, the, what, area median income for a person that can afford the median house, or something like that. And I don't think that house at its sale met those requirements of the, what is that? Yeah, the thing that you get out every 10 years, the, the plan. Anyway, I, and it wasn't in the minutes. And then I went to look at the video, there wasn't a video. So it's a secret as to what the profit is. So if somebody can tell me, remind my mind, because I just didn't write it down. But I think it was in the range of 130,000.
I'm sure the manager can get you that information.
He's not going to say anything what it is.
Oh, okay. Well, now, we'd have to look into it and get you that information.
Well, he, he's the one who stated it at the meeting. He, he wanted to tell everyone about the great profit you made. And so, but as I say here, I missed it. I forgot it. And I'm asking to know what it is, but you're not going to tell me.
Do you know the exact number for John?
Exact, but it was around 120.
Around 120.
Around 120. Well, I guess I can put in a data request for the exact number.
Well, you can just call him, too.
No, we have to get it in writing, because you never know what happens between the requests and that. I've been here a long time. I'm sorry. And the last item is, is kind of a funny item, but I'm sitting in my cabin on the 7th of August, looking at the email, and there's an email from North St. Paul. And it was sent at 8:10 on a Sunday. And it said something about a meeting. And I thought, "Oh, my God, that's got to be an important meeting." It's the usual notification you get when you, when there's a meeting to be had.
You're going over three minutes, so.
Yeah, I know. But, but it turns out that, I think it was sent in error. But for an email to come, notification of a city council meeting on Sunday at 8:10, I try not to open anything up from North St. Paul when I'm at my cabin, but I had to at that time. But I, in the end, I guess it was not to be sent in the first place. So, that's it.
Thank you, John. David Nelson? Are we going to learn about the goats, or?
Oh, that's me. Yeah. Dave Nelson at 2574 Fourth Avenue East, North St. Paul. Southwood, I think I was on the parking wreck with Terry in that, and we were all divided up a park, and Southwood was, I was supposed to be in charge of. Well, my daughter's a wildlife biologist. She come down and she walked through. She says, "Dad, this has got to go, this has got to go, this has got to go." We pretty much eradicated the giant Japanese knotweed. I got pictures of Don Benick out there, and I cut it a foot and a half off the ground because I didn't know what, there's trees or stumps there. And he's holding it on the ground, and it was four and a half feet taller than he was. So that's how big that stuff was. No, he shrunk right now.
I was going to say, did he shrink a little bit, Don, or?
But anyway, that was pretty much eradicated, and a lot of volunteers come out to help and that. So we, we did that without poisoning or anything like that. We started pulling the buckthorn, and the people were upset a little bit about pulling the buckthorn at first, but the residents come out and they start pulling, and I got to thank the residents. And some of them here, Lloyd was a big help down there helping and that. And Terry was there when we put the overlook on. Well, we finished that December 22nd or 21st. That's how cold it was when, I had to shovel snow to finish it. But anyway, those are some of the things that we did. And that, but right now, the people that were volunteering and that are, we're retired. We can no longer pull stuff like that or anything. That's why I brought pictures of the goats that's in Maplewood. You probably saw them on the news and that. Lake Elmo used them, Stillwater's used them. I don't know about Oakdale, but there's quite a few other communities right down the Mourner Road used them, along the Mississippi River, they used them and that. They save the people's backs. They take and strip them. If you, anybody here, if you've got time, go down to the YMCA in Maplewood. You can go down and watch them. There's probably about 40 or 50 goats there. They put up a fence, they're in charge of them, and that's, they're, they have all the liability.
The goats do, the goats do, or the city does?
No, the, the city, the people that put up the goats have it.
Okay.
But also, there is grants out there. I try, I think there's two grants out there where they'll pay for a big portion of this. And I tried to look at it, but I'm not in charge of the city, so I can't do it. Has to be a city employee that does the legwork on this. And that, but I mean, at least call Maplewood, see how they like it, and that, that would be very helpful. And I got to say, when the residents were out there cleaning out the buckthorn, they complained at first, but when the buckthorn was clean, they says, "Man, we never knew how nice that was," because they had owls in the trees, owl's nests that we had there. They had guys come out with cameras, taking pictures of the birds, and people from their homes could see the pond. They could see the deer walking through there. And everything like that. But anyway, if the city would, please, at least contact Maplewood, and there is grants out there that will help you, I'm sure. And on the second page that I handed out, I don't know who's doing the weeds treating down there, but in 2014 was the first year, and we were the very first city to win the LEAP Award in the city of, you know, in the Washington County, Ramsey County watershed. We won the LEAP Award, and that's because of the safe practice we had of no spraying next to the water, pulling stuff, hauling it out, removing the unwanted stuff, like burdocks. When the burdock's just got a little blue tip, now's the time you go with a shovel and you cut the root. And that, and just pull it out and just relay, and it won't spread. But as far as, and that was in.
If you could just go a little bit faster, over the three minutes, Dave.
But anyway, the, the spraying out there, I don't know who's doing it, because we went on the watershed tour, and it was question and answer. How do you get rid of reed canary? You do not go out with a four-wheeler and drive all over, spot spraying, and you got the mist going all over. The butterfly garden that we put in out there for the monarchs, which you know is invasive, I mean, that, critical now, they wiped that totally out. Some of the other people that's been out there working with us, they went out there and looked, they run over the blue stem. Blue stem will not seed this year, because they, they run over it, and the spray stemmed it, set it back. If we're going to take and get it back, we need to get it done. And the watershed says, "You cut the tops off the reed canary grass," which there was three volunteers. We went out there, it was probably 30 some hours. We cut all the tops off the reed canary's grass in that one acre. And then you're supposed to take and cut the grass off about three inches or four inches above the ground. When the shoots come up, you spot spray with a tank. You don't drive out there and, and shoot it. This is right from the watershed. That's how they get rid of it. And if you can't do it right the first time, the city's wasting their money. You're throwing your money out the window, what those guys are doing. So it's got to be done the right way, maybe cost a little bit more, but you'd be farther ahead in the long run. And they need to learn their plants. You don't spray volunteer, I mean, pollinator gardens and pollinator plants to kill them. So, thanks.
Okay, Dave, thank you. Appreciate it. We do have the Southwood Commission that actually works down there, and works with the, supposedly with the weed people. So evidently, some communication has to be done between that and the workforce down there, the Southwood workforce. So at this time, I'll turn it over to, unless there's anybody on Zoom or? There's nobody else. So at this time, I'll turn it over to City Manager Brian Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Onto the city business action items and recommendations. We have two items. First one is the 2022 street maintenance crack ceiling, receiving quotes and award contract. Engineer Morgan Dolly is here to speak to that. I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item before you for consideration is the award of contract for street maintenance work in, in terms of crack ceiling. Something that we do on our streets between every two to five years. It is something that is in our budget, our annual street maintenance budget every other year. And the last time that this occurred was in 2020. There's a map in your packet that generally shows the areas to be done, and also we can keep track of second-tier areas, or if we had additional budget, or if costs allowed, where we would go next. Basically, it's just kind of an ongoing record-keeping effort in terms of what streets need that type of maintenance. In terms of review of why we do this, this is just kind of recommended, ongoing sealing work to seal up any normal cracks that might be occurring within pavement, primarily the newer roads, so roads with, which have been reconstructed or rehabilitated or overlaid in the last, well, since 2014, when the, kind of our modern capital improvement plan kicked off. So staying on top of those, we can extend the life cycle of those roads and pavements, getting as many years as we possibly can out of them. And so, we went out for quotes. We received a couple quotes from two contractors, which we've worked before, and the recommended low quota is Allied Blacktop, and with a grand total quote of $83,100. I should note that the, and we've worked with Allied here in town before, previous efforts, so they do good work. The price of oil, I think, is a little bit higher now than it was probably two years ago when this was done. And so, the budgeted amount for this particular activity is $70,000. Staff's plan in terms of managing this contract, if it is awarded by council, would be to just reduce the number of linear feet of roads that we have within, like on the map, for example, roads that might be kind of borderline between tier one and tier two, if you will, a little bit more than a mile, but not significantly enough that I think in my mind would put additional risk on those roads, but just staying within the budget amount, unless the council wanted to give direction for staff to at least look into if there's additional funds that can be secured. But staff is perfectly comfortable working within the budgetary means and the identified $70,000 number. And again, just providing direction to the contractor in terms of fewer linear feet for completion of this activity. If awarded by council here at this meeting, then the anticipated date of completion is October 1st, and we would move forward with that contractor, getting him on the schedule as soon as possible, so we could get that done before the end of the year and within the current budget cycle. So with that, I'll stand for any questions. For this particular item, you do have a resolution. So the action item is to accept the quotes and award by resolution, the construction contract for the 2022 street, or I'm sorry, crack ceiling project. So again, I'll stand for any questions council might have.
This is no overlay. This is just crack ceiling and.
So this is what, yeah, residents or council may have seen in the past where they actually bring in oil and they fill the, it's actually not oil, it's a little bit thicker than that, but it seals up the cracks, sometimes on the edges of the road with the curb. They put toilet paper down to kind of keep it from spreading around. It is actually toilet paper. It's the real thing, yes. Nothing special about that. But, you know, typically, as soon as they are done with that and the toilet paper is down, it can be driven on right away. It's very non-invasive in terms of disruption to vehicular traffic or anything like that.
Works done in the life, prevents potholes, or what do we?
Correct. Yeah, well, yes. So potholes actually start by cracks, right? And so by keeping the water out of the cracks, you prevent that, that water intrusion will actually get into the subbase, which is underneath the pavement, and expands and contracts, especially in the winter and the spring with freeze thaw. Those things open up and turn into potholes, right? So we're trying, especially on the new, newly invested roadways that we've built over the last several years, and all the cracks that we're seeing, seeing are normal, right? So roads will crack over time. But if we keep those sealed over time, again, MinDOT's done research on this, and, you know, every two to three, five years, I guess, on a regular basis, keeping those cracks sealed really give the roads their best chance of, you know, not just lasting 20 or 25 years, but again, with kind of ongoing investments with maintenance, and then maybe eventually getting to an overlay in 15 or 20 years, we can hopefully get 50, 60, maybe 70 years out of these roads. So that's the recommended practice. Maplewood kind of follows a very similar practice, I know. And again, every two to three years is what we kind of plan on in North St. Paul.
You have other questions for Morgan? But you're looking at, you're asking for something else rather than the resolution, or?
No, just the resolution. If the council wanted to give direction on, should we see if there's an additional $13,000 so we can just do the full contract amount? If there's, if there's not, if that's not available, again, at a staff level, we would just go back to that 70,000. But if, if the council wants me to look into that, I can. But if you want to just stick with the budgeted amount, because that's set and it's been in there since the beginning of the year, that's perfectly fine as well, too.
I'm okay if you, if you could find the money, the $13,000, I'd be okay with that. Council okay with that?
I would welcome that.
Generally, okay. We'll, we'll look. And if we can't, you know, if the funds aren't there, we'll, we'll stick with the budget.
So the resolution is accepting quotes and awarding a construction contract for the 2022 crack ceiling project?
Correct.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Thorson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. And it back over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item up is the downtown landscape improvements, receiving quotes and awarding contract. That also I believe Morgan is going to speak to.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so this next item is a natural conclusion, almost, I guess, if you will, to the, to what started with the Sentinel redevelopment and the street and utility improvements that occurred beginning in 2020 on Seventh Avenue and Margaret Street, in and around, again, the, that intersection and the Sentinel development. Roads were reconstructed, sidewalks, et cetera. And at that time, based on fiscal constraints, there was landscaping that was intended to go into some of the areas, which you may be familiar, around the downtown area that are currently filled with mulch as a temporary measure. But it was always intended to be planted with trees and shrubs and plantings. And I do have some visuals to share with the council really quickly before we move forward. But, so, at that time, again, operating with. But so at that time, again, operating within the project budgets, the landscaping and I think irrigation were removed from that existing contract. And everything went in basically knowing that what was being done at that time wasn't going to preclude the addition or the installation of the landscaping until, you know, a later date. Now that project is in large part complete. There's a couple outstanding minor punch list items remaining. However, we wanted to get the landscaping and the planting under contract. And if possible, if the nurseries and supply chain issues cooperate, we want to get that in before the end of the year here. So we went out for quotes with the exact same landscaping plan that was originally in the original plan set to get pricing. There is, again, also looking at budgets. There's available funds to be able to accommodate these improvements now at this time. And so what's before you for consideration is we took three quotes, again, with the exact same plan as what was conceived in 2020, but put that back out to to public quoting. Those prices ranged from fifty-three, approximately fifty-three thousand to seventy-three thousand. Staff is recommending award to the low quota of the Southview Design out of St. Paul, Minnesota, in the amount of fifty-three thousand, forty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents. I should also mention that what is included in this package is only the the plantings of the landscaping. They are going to have the responsibility of taking out that existing mulch and replacing it with new mulch once the plantings are in. Consecutively, under a different umbrella, which actually is a part of the original construction contract for the street and utility improvements, is the completion of boring in irrigation sleeves and the actual irrigation. So we got some pricing for irrigation. And so the coordination here, and we wrote this into the specifications for this particular effort, that everybody needs to cooperate and time everything so that it works together. But by the end of this year, if everything works out, we should have all the sleeving installed, an actual irrigation system installed. And then the plants as well, too, which need the irrigation to be able to survive. So this will kind of put a cap on that project and get us to the point that we had originally conceived in terms of what the vision was, in terms of irrigation, sleeving, plantings, everything all working well together. And then moving forward, that will kind of complete, at least that, you know, especially the above-ground visual vision that was conceived two, three years ago and when that project was first undertaken. So, and I should also mention that that other effort with irrigation, again, by my review anyway, if you combine the pricing that we received here with these quotes and then also the cost of that irrigation system, it all seems to fit within the existing budget that we had identified for all of this kind of happening now, two years later. So these, the pricing appears to be favorable. And staff is recommending award of that low quote, as I said, in the amount of fifty-three thousand, forty-seven dollars. And if I can share my screen here really quickly, I will try to show you an image of, let's see, did that work? There we go, okay. So I apologize that these are technical drawings and not kind of more colorful renderings, if you will. But what this shows here, and I can zoom in a little bit. So this, what you're looking at here from left to right is Seventh Avenue. And this little bump out, if you can see my cursor moving here, my pointer, this little bump out, that's the crosswalk that is lined up with the post office. And so currently, these planting areas on either side of that walk through are, as I said, they're open areas. It's not concrete, but it was left open intentionally to receive these landscaping improvements. And so as you can see, it's a series of lower-level plantings and shrubs, some flowers. And then each one of these areas does receive a larger tree. The size of the trees that we're planting here are two and a half inch calipers. So that means the trunk of the tree is measured at two and a half. And that's typically what we would, might look to do downtown. No larger than that, trees larger than that tend to get much more expensive and they actually have a harder time surviving after getting replanted and transplanted. The types of large trees that we're looking at here are shade master locusts, which is consistent with, there's some other locusts in and around, kind of mixed throughout downtown. And then, I'm just going to slide over here. This is actually, well, I'll move down the street, if that's okay. So this next slide is kind of moving towards Margaret. So in between that post office crosswalk, if you will, there's some smaller little planting areas that, as you can see, are strategically spaced in between streetlights and other things like pedestrian or not the handicap kind of ramp. And those are either a simply just low-level plantings with some shrubs or some of the other ones have kind of medium-sized ornamental trees. And then as I move again towards the intersection, this is the intersection of Seventh Avenue and Margaret, just down the street from City Hall here. As you can see, kind of on all four corners, plus a couple extra areas, there's planting areas as well there that, four of them do include the larger trees, the locusts. And there's some landscaping that go around the area where the traffic signal operations electrical cab cabinet is and the lighting utility cabinets as well, too. As far as species are concerned, let's see if I can reshare.
Is there anything going on in front of the Lilly Building?
I can come back to that in one second, just to double check. So this is Adams Crab Apple, this is a, it's not going to drop apples, but it is a good tree for sidewalks and downtown. But it does kind of have some nice flowering color to it. That's one of the ornamental trees. Japanese lilac is the other small ornamental trees. Those are, again, in kind of those smaller areas that are intermixed between the street lighting. And then the shade master locust is, looks kind of like this. And again, there's some, there are some locusts on Seventh Avenue to the east of Margaret and also to the west, kind of mixed in with other species as well, too. Knowing that it's important to keep a variety of species to kind of protect against, like what's happened where all the ash trees or all the elm trees get to be at risk for a particular type of disease, right? So we don't want to have too many of one thing. But this generally conforms with kind of that concept for downtown and also in large part with the downtown revitalization master plan that the city adopted in 2017. So all of that kind of went together to inform this landscaping plan. Moving back to the post office, or which building were you talking about?
The Lilly Building.
The Lilly Building, there was a, yep.
As you heard tonight.
So there are, and this is something that actually I've spoken to the developer about. There's only two little planting areas right there that are the more minor ones. We do have to install the irrigation there to get to a point where eventually it will have to keep going down the street as well, too. And that will be another coordination issue with their improvements. Right now, though, that there's, should not be a significant impact with what they're proposing in terms of what they're looking to do against the curb is mostly to the west of this location. And this falls within kind of our new pavement area, if you can visualize that, which actually is a little bit west of the post office property and overlaps with the Lilly redevelopment by about a hundred feet or something like that. So that's all that's in front of their building are those two. One ornamental tree more towards their property corner. And then again, one smaller planting area that does not have a tree. Those are the two, two spaces right, right there.
So you think we should eliminate that while?
Not at this time, no, I know. I think that, you know, as we get a contractor on board and as we learn more from the developer and what their construction program is, because there's a lot of unknowns with respect to what they're planning from a construction standpoint and timing standpoint. And in my opinion, they should be able to work around this. Now, as we get further through conversations and as this contractor is waiting for irrigation to be installed and we get mobilized, it certainly is easy enough to pull a tree out if we think it's going to be at risk from their construction process. But at this time, I don't think it makes any sense to to make those decisions too hastily. And if we can get them in and get them irrigated and get them growing, it just means that they'll be bigger and more healthy and more vibrant for downtown later on rather than being planted, you know, a year or two later. So if we can plant them, I'd want to, just to maybe help soften the construction that we'll be potentially seeing downtown with their project, right? So that's my thought on it. And with that, I'll stand for any questions again. For this item, I don't have a resolution, so it'd simply be a motion and a second to award the quote. Correct, to Southview, Southview Landscaping.
Dollar amount, fifty-three thousand.
Correct, that's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions for Morgan? In regards to the planning? If not, motion is to award a construction contract to Southview Design of St. Paul for the downtown landscaping improvements in the amount of fifty-three thousand, forty-seven dollars and ninety-six cents.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Good, so they'll start doing that when?
Well, the two efforts, as I mentioned before, the irrigation sleeving and the irrigation system are going to have to work hand in hand. And so the irrigation contractor has been given the go-ahead, but that's under a different purview. So we'll need to make sure that they're done first. And I think that it's reasonable to expect that what we, well, we can't, we don't want to plant too late. But I think what I'd like to see is that we are at least starting to plan for that either late in September or maybe early in October so that we can get everything in and planted and happy before it gets too cold out. That would be the goal.
And are these guaranteed for a year?
Nurseries and our contract will provide a warranty for the trees and all the plantings one year from the time of installation.
Good. Okay. Turn it over to City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Reports from the City Manager, do you do that to the general or do you do that right away?
We moved one down. We added two. So the park and recreation park entry signs, we'll deal with that right now. We do have people here from the Park and Rec. Mike, the reason I polled it is we had a question from our planning commission chair in regards to how big the sign can be, position of the signs. And I was told that somebody might be able to tell us, answer those questions that she had raised.
Yes, I can. I actually brought a sample so you can kind of see how big it is. And this is?
Trying to come up here, Jill, and talk and?
So this is a twenty-four by forty-eight. So this would be like a door for the Colby Hills. And really, the larger ones are six inches larger. They stand probably about this high. So it'd be three feet from the ground to the bottom. So the twenty-four inches would be five feet and then five and a half feet. The poles are about four inches. So that's why we went a little shorter proportionately when they were this high and they had a small pole.
And those are metal signs?
I have a sample of material that those would be made out of.
Are they double-sided or single-sided?
Well, it was a little. So we did work with others.
Heavy.
Material, it just slid in like a picture frame. Better than the green color. Very user-friendly, maintenance is great, durability is great. As for placement, if there's an existing sign there, it'll be going in the same spot I'm working with Public Works to see if it's going to be a full base or just post for maintenance reasons.
If there's, if there's no sign, like at Silver Lake, we were going to work with Public Works also to put one by the pickleball courts and over by the playground. And really, just where they're going to be is visibility and maintenance.
So the signs that you replace, the signs are like eight feet?
They are very large now.
They're very large right now. Those would come out.
Correct.
And then this sign, you're saying the width would be four feet?
The smaller parks are four feet, the larger parks are five feet.
Five feet.
And they're blue, so I don't know if I have the, I don't have the computer. So I think it's in the packet. I think they're going to be very visible, so you can probably see.
Did you have other options that you looked at when you?
We did.
Like these and?
Yes. There were wacker signs in Roseville. We started with them and then I didn't hear anything back. I did reach out to, the company was Creative Impressions in Oakdale. And the commission looked at both their signs and these, and this is what they had selected.
So I know, like the Colby Hills one here, you show, and I know, because it's eight feet long right now, people can put up things to advertise, like National Night Out, you know? And I'm sure that's not the purpose of the sign, but because the sign is so big, they're able to, you know, to say there's stuff going on in the park. I think with this sign, you're really not going to have that ability to to do that maybe. Or maybe you can. Maybe you can hang something down underneath the? So. Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, if I may, it looks like the contract or quote is pretty much under budget. So are there other specifications that, you know, are desired by the Parks and Rec Commission that would, I mean, yeah, are there any other specifications?
That's a great deal.
That would, that you would want to upgrade to or add on?
Oh, um, I don't think so, I don't know. There is, there is a cleaning solution that helps with graffiti, works great on that. So they would sell that along with that. And so the maintenance of the signs would be?
So they're graffiti-proof, kind of, or?
Not graffiti-proof. There will still be magic markers out there.
Okay. Any other questions for Jill or Lloyd? Councilmember Cole, you want to add anything to this?
No real questions. The only other comment that I had was in the email that we received earlier in the week, there was a question on sign count. And I believe there was a request for Colby Hills to get an additional sign in the vacant space. I mean, we're definitely under budget, so I don't know. I know the Park and Rec discussed that, Jill, and I can't remember. I mean, clearly, they went with one, but I don't remember. Lloyd, maybe you can help, too. I don't remember why.
So I think we were open to it. It was, it is a grass area, so they were thinking maybe one of the smaller metal signs just saying Colby Hills, public users, but not like a full-size park sign. I think they're open to it, though. Could be done now, could be done later.
There's also a fence that runs along the side, maybe hanging it on the fence, just getting a sign to hang on the fence rather than the poles in the ground. Because they do flood that rink again in the wintertime. So maybe that might be problematic if there's a sign there and then kids probably shooting hockey pucks at it, you know? That's, that's what I, I think there used to be a sign up there and I think some kids I grew up with shot pucks at it and that's why I can't, no, I didn't do that, no. I would never admit to doing it, anyway.
That's a good idea, put it on the fence, just some sort of advertisement that it is part of the Colby Hills Park. All right, well, there's nothing else. There's no motion or anything, no recommendation needed, so it's already been approved, so.
I think because we polled it, we just need to vote on it individually, though. Because it was not on the consent agenda and now it's just as a standalone item.
Well, it says recommended action, it says informational, no recommendation needed.
That was my doing.
Is that what you wanted, or?
Yeah, it was just information. Yeah, it was just informational.
Okay. Legal?
Yeah, there's no vote to be taken.
Okay.
There's no motion.
Okay.
On the memo to be heard, so unless if someone wants to make one, no vote.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then the fourth one is the Concord volleyball lease. And I'll turn that over to Councilmember Cole. Or one, sorry.
Wow.
Sorry, Councilmember one.
Thank you. Yeah, I just have some questions in regards to the condition of the building, whether we're able to last the winter and all of that, to extend the lease.
So I think that I'll turn that over to City Manager.
Yes. So that was a couple of items that I was going to bring up.
I know we're going to have another meeting on that later on.
Yes. So in a month, about the middle of next month, they're doing the, it's more or less a patch of the roof to get it at least eight, watertight for the winter before we do a serious re-roofing of the unit. Another thing that popped up was one of the boilers went out there as well. So we have ordered a new one at a cost of $15,000. There are two boilers in that place. There, the other one is going to be looked at and hopefully after getting deeper into it, we can fix what's there, but that's yet to be determined. So these are just some of the items that we're doing to get it through the winter into next summer. So if you guys pass the renovation, as you would say, of the building, then we'll do it more deeply.
I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions on the lease? What page is, is there a resolution or is there a motion?
Just a motion to approve.
Just to approve.
Motion to approve the lease at Concord.
Six-month extension.
Ending June 30th, 2023. So it's extenuation of the continued, of the existing lease, which makes the existing lease 18 months?
That's right.
So it doesn't need to have a new lease for the six?
No, we're just extending.
Perfect.
The existing lease.
And then all the other conditions are the same?
Yep, that's right.
Okay.
So the motion is to approve an extended lease agreement with the City of North St. Paul Concord volleyball through June 30th of 2023.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cole.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Peterson. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You're there till June 30th. Is that it?
That's it for what was?
So I'll turn it back over to you for general.
Thank you. Reports for City Manager and Departments, a couple of updates, probably specifically for the HRA. We did close on the Eldridge property last Friday, so we do have the keys for the property now. We have it scheduled for next week for the hazardous removal of the asbestos on the house. Let me see what else we have. We also have the closing this Friday for the 19th Avenue House, so that closing will be done as well. We also have scheduled this week for the Eldridge House that it's being surveyed, so we can split that lot, make it two lots for the two different projects that we're looking at there for the student build homes. Spoke of the boiler at the community center. Today we did, so Cynthia is retiring from the Community Development Department. So we did interviews today for five people who turned their application, and we believe we found a good one for it. We have places that offer out there for them and they have accepted, so that's great. We'll have somebody be able to come in and work under Cynthia for a little while before she actually is, leaves us. So that worked out really well. It's going to be a really good employee. And then in mentioning of the downtown, we're talking about the cabinets that were in front of, well, the northwest corner of Margaret and 7th Avenue. We have three cabinets there, there for the street lighting, but also for the traffic controls there. We are going to be able to narrow that down to two cabinets, but they're going to be adding another cabinet there, a smaller one for the sprinkler control system that's there. So try to get some of the, or at least one cabinet out of there and consolidate it down a little bit. And they might be making the project for the Arts Council to wrap them up, maybe, yeah. That is all I have.
General business, or actually reports of council commissions and committees, Councilmember Cole.
Park and Recreation held their last meeting on the 27th of July. Just a few topics that consumed a lot of time. One was the sign design that was brought forth for approval or notification of council tonight. The second is they are continuing to review options at Housie Park to redo the tennis courts, potentially turn them into picket, picket, pickleball? Picket, picket? Pickleball courts, as well as expand the ADA accessibility up that hill to where the courts currently are and up into the road. So more to, more to come on that. Next meeting is 6:30 on the 24th here in council chambers. EDA met, discussed a lot of things that were brought forth here. We discussed the housing study that was included in the workshop packet tonight, as well as the Lily Building and the presentation that was included in the workshop. And the EDA will be working on their wishes for the EDA level for 2023 to be presented shortly. Next meeting is September the 13th. That's all I've got.
Councilmember one?
The Planning Commission had met the first Thursday of this month, and the work that was done was recommendations for council on the prioritization of different projects found in the comp plan, Living Streets Plan, and the redevelopment master plan. The next meeting is September 1st in the chambers here. And I did want to also mention in regards, in response to our resident bringing up resident, other residents' concerns, their, their concern is about air quality. So just to clarify, that that is something that not just one, but several residents did come to share that. The Arts and Culture Commission, they're working on Project Snowy. They had to call out for artists. They're, they also worked on a rubric to determine which artists would be doing the art. And then that meeting will be tomorrow. It'll be a special meeting at 6:30.
Is there one artist doing all the artwork, or is it artist for each snowy, or?
I believe it's artist for each snowy.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I attended my second Improving Local Economic Policy Committee through the league, and it was interesting today. We had Commissioner Steve Grohl, he's the DED of economic development and jobs, and he was interested in saying that, you know, there's so many, not so many, so many workers, I mean, not enough workers for all these jobs. I mean, we've got the lowest unemployment and probably in the nation, they can't fill the jobs. And we also had the Jennifer Hull, Commissioner of the Minnesota Housing, and that was interesting, too. She said if anybody is underwater or they can't make their mortgage payments, there is money available. And she said just contact them. And she was kind of surprised how much money was left over, so she wants to get rid of it, so. Otherwise, it's been an interesting committee. One more meeting in September. That's all I have.
Councilmember Thorson? General business, actually I got something on Veterans Park. We have the POW MIA Parade, September 22nd. We do have a guest speaker, that is going to be John Silliman. I'd like to thank Councilmember Cole for getting me that number and talking to him, and he will be our guest speaker for that night. Other than that, that's all I have. And general business, Councilmember Cole.
Last week of the? Pardon me. Last week, many of us had the opportunity to attend the swearing-in service for four new North St. Paul police officers, as well as a promotional ceremony for someone who was promoted to sergeant. Always very moving. Just, just, just something really, really neat to attend. I would also like to invite the Chief of Police now to attend one of our council meetings. He's fully staffed. We would love to, love to have the opportunity to hear his vision and where he wants to go from here, so that's always, that's always exciting to hear. Thursday night is the last scheduled music in the park. It is Thursday, the 18th at 6 o'clock at Casey Lake. The music is provided by MT Pockets is the band. So they've, I believe this is their third or fourth year performing at, in the August promotion, the August event, so this is exciting to hear. And just one other question that I had, I'd been, been reached out to, just for us to be able to provide an update on the ordinance that opens up some sidewalk space for local businesses and where we stand. I know we've had conversation around it. I know that there's, there's a lot of things going on. They were just looking for some direction and at some point in time, Brian, if you, if you can, you can either update us where we are now. I know it's got multiple locations that it's got to sort itself through, but either now or we can catch up at a later time.
I'd like to give you a more detailed update later after looking into it, please.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember one?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, I just want to piggyback on what Councilmember Cole said. That swearing-in was very good. We've got some very good folks. We're very lucky to have those young, talented men and women, and it's great because I've been on the council for a long time and we've never been at a full complement, so kudos to the chief, and he's got some good plans for them, and that would be good if he could come in and kind of tell us what his plan is. I just want to wish everybody Happy Labor Day.
Councilmember Thorson?
Couple items, just want to recognize the American Legion for their big, beautiful patriotic mural that went up. I think it was a couple weeks ago it finished. Hopefully that inspires some other businesses to look at doing something similar if they have empty wall space throughout town.
It's kind of cool because it's a, it's a wrap.
Yeah.
And it's like a 30-year guarantee on that.
We all got an email with a concerned resident expressing her concern about boulevard trees, and I understand the area that she was talking about is one that's slated for a full reconstruct, so we're not looking at planting trees that are being removed. But I know there are other areas throughout town where boulevard trees have been removed, and we've either done a full reconstruction and no boulevard places have been replaced. And in reviewing our city ordinance, there is nothing specifically that says we will not plant trees in the boulevard. So I'm just curious if that's something that is just up to managers discretion or Public Works, or if that's actually something that the city council should consider and future consideration for adopting as a, as a policy about actually planting trees in the boulevard. So just to bring that up. And then with this second student build house, assuming it's going to start soon, I think it would behoove us to have an HRA meeting where we can maybe discuss a budget and a plan and maybe get some sort of a recap of the actual expenses that we incurred from the last house. And we had one resident questioning what the profit was, maybe if there's some kind of layout where we can go back and look at the actual costs and the acquisition and maybe the in-kind time that staff has put in. I know it's not, you know, maybe we don't budget for that, but just some kind of recap of the last home, rather than just a mention of a number. And then looking at the next future houses, developing some sort of budget and plan for those as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. I'd like to mention driving down by 7th Avenue and McKnight, we have that piece of property that the city owns. Just looking at that, maybe possibilities, maybe look into doing some sort of monument sign advertising our downtown. You know, we've got the space there. Advertise the downtown, you can advertise the car show, advertise, you know, come see Newman's or new restaurants or what have you. They've got, I don't know how many cars go by McKnight there and they drive by our town and don't even know that we have a downtown. I think it'd be kind of interesting just to look into it and see if it's, I don't know, doable to put something down there. Just wanted to mention that from the, from the Veterans Park, we do have 1,377 pavers that are, that are in there. I believe next Friday, they're putting in another 25 pavers, so just wanted to update you on that. Other than that, they don't have anything else unless anybody else forgot anything or if not, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember one. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.